Okay, right, yeah, I'll start again. Yeah. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the Environment Sustainability Committee on the 16th of July 2024. Councillors in attendance, councillor Jacob Madsen, councillor Pi Augustine, councillor Nicole Johnock, mayor Theresa Harding and councillor and deputy chair of the committee Andrew Antonelli. I think we're all present, so no apologies. With the acknowledgement of country, the Epsom City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters we share, and we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations of interest? There have been no declaration of interest, I'll move on to any business outstanding. Is there any business outstanding? If there's no business outstanding, I'll move on to confirmation of the minutes of the Environment and Sustainability Committee, number 2024 01 of 11 June 2024. Do I have a mover for that, councillor Antonelli, seconded by councillor Augustine? I'll take the vote on that, all in favour? Good, unanimous. Now, I'll move on to the first item of business, which is support to the State Emergency Service policy. This is a report concerning the review and update of the support of the State Emergency Service policy. Do members present have any questions of council officers? If you don't have any questions, I'll move straight on to ask for a mover. Perhaps councillor Madsen and seconded councillor Augustine. Carried, I think that's the appropriate. No discussion? No discussion. I'd ask everyone to vote on that. Unanimous, carried. Right, we'll move on to the second item of business for today, and that's disaster preparedness market research. Do any of the councillors present have any questions of the council offices? Yes, we do, I'd ask the council officer to come present, and I note that councillor Antonelli has some questions.
Good afternoon.
If you could state your name and your title.
Sure, Chrissie McKenna, I'm the acting disaster and natural hazards manager.
Good.
Apologies, the title has recently changed.
That's fine. Councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, how often do we undertake this particular research for preparedness?
Sure, we actually haven't done it for a number of years, so we haven't done it in the four years that I've been with council. It's certainly something I would like to see happen again, so we can track community sentiment and behaviours over time. But at the current point in time, it's not an existing recurring activity.
Yeah, so with respect to the report, how much does a report like this study, like this, cost council, do you know? Am I asking the right person, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. So, the cost of this piece of work was in the order of roughly 60,000 to 70,000, but I will note that it was wholly grant funded.
From?
So, through the preparing, yeah, yeah, Preparing Australian Communities Programme through the Feds.
Okay, very good, thank you. Do committee members have any other questions? There have been no other questions? Thanks very much. I'd ask that one of the committee members move to accept the research. Yes, I move councillor Augustine and seconded mayor. Is there any discussion? Yes, mayor.
Thank you, Chair. It's important that council engages with the community to ensure that we have an assessment of the level of understanding of what residents and businesses' risk awareness is, as well as supporting them in their knowledge of comprehension of preparedness and resilience levels. This snapshot of 450 residents and 90 local businesses found that 46% of respondents took steps to reduce their disaster risk the 12 months prior to being surveyed, and half of residents reported having an emergency kit and emergency plan. Almost half of all businesses reported having a business continuity or disaster plan, and over 90% reported that they would use the Bureau of Meteorology app or website as an information source before enduring and after the disaster. I think this shows that we're on the right track for our community education awareness programme. There's always room for improvement, we're always looking to improve our strategies, and this snapshot also shows that people have a relatively low perceived likelihood of bushfire risk, with 53% of residents saying they hadn't taken any steps to reduce their disaster risk in the preceding 12 months. Residents also indicate that they would prefer door knocking as a warning channel, which is a very resource intensive exercise. I just note too that after the 2022 floods, both in February, March and then in May, this council initiated its own independent review. We went to every single division, mainly, I guess, listening to people who had been severely flood impacted. And I find it's interesting the things that there are similarities and where there aren't. And I note in particular the door knocking, we had a lot of residents who were very upfront, certainly during the flood review, saying that they don't have a TV or the internet, don't listen to radio, and their methods, they want people to door knock them. So, it's interesting that that particular theme has come through in this, with, this is obviously residents, not just flood impacted people. So, it was really interesting to see that come through and then letting people know that we are in a city. And you just can't expect the resources for the SES and council or the LDMG to door knock every single resident that's impacted. So, it's how we work around that is going to be one of those challenges. And how do we support our community to be more resilient? So, if you are a resident that doesn't have a TV, isn't on Facebook, doesn't watch the internet, doesn't go online, do you have neighbours that do? So, you know, how do we, you know, support our community in that situation? So, yeah, I was really pleased, and it was even great that the Australian Government paid for this. The National Emergency Management Agency grant was very much well received, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you for those wise words, mayor. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Antonelli?
I just want to say I'm quite happy the federal government paid for it as well. $60,000 to $70,000 for surveying a little over 500 people and organisations.
Thank you to councillor Antonelli. Well, I move to accept the report for disaster preparedness and market research, those in favour? Unanimous, good, thank you, carried. The next item of business, the recommendation for board chair of Green Evate Proprietary Limited, has some confidential aspects to it. So, I'll move pursuant to section 254 J 3 G of the Local Government Regulation 2012, that we move into closed session. Do I have a second, councillor Andrew Antonelli? So, we'll now move into closed session. Now, does anyone have any questions of council officers? Oh, sorry, well, I thought we did, oh, yes, correct councillor Antonelli, yes. I take that as a mover. I've moved, you second it. Then we vote. Thank you. Thanks very much, carried, carried. Okay, now we move.